Either one may answer the question, it's probably more more and more apt to Mr. Zakos. And you are an owner of the property, Mr. Zakos, and you will continue to be an occupier of the of the structure. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. With respect to water and sewer, is there public water at the at the location?
Public water, private sewer.
Septic sewer. requires that adequate provision be made for the disposable for the disposal of sewage, waste, and drainage generated by the occupancy of the accessory unit in accordance with the requirements of the Board of Health, and that such determination shall be made prior to the application for a special permit and included with such application. I note that with the application, there was nothing that I noted, at least, concerning the adequacy of the disposal of sewage. Was there any application or input sought from the Board of Health on the adequacy of the, I assume it's a septic system to to handle the increased increased sewage?
Yes, there has been back and forth with the Board of Health on that. So there was soil testing and dismember and a plan of expansion of the current system that's been submitted to the Board of Health. We're happy to share the plans, but my understanding is they're currently with the Board of Health.
And the Board of Health hasn't made a a determination, one way to the suitability, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
The Board officially, I don't think so. The health agent was here and has spoken with a septic engineer and understand he's in support of it, but I don't think there's been a Board of Health decision.
Okay, thank you. 7.6.5 requires that exterior passageways and accessways shall not detract from the single-family appearance of the of the dwelling. And from my review of the plans, and I readily admit I'm not the best one reviewing plans, there isn't any exterior passageway. Is that, is that correct? For the, for the new unit?
No, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And there is an interior doorway between, between the existing house and the proposed accessory unit. You mentioned, I believe, sir, that there's a passageway on the second floor. Is that right?
Yes, sir, there's a connection on the second floor.
And with respect to the the two rooms that are on the ground level of the garage. And I believe, if I can see the plans correctly. It's a kitchen and an eating way. Is that correct?
Right, it's one large open area on the lower back area. Yes, sir.
And that's walled off, walled off from the two cars?
Yes, sir.
In the garage? Okay.
Yeah, solid wall between the
And there, and there is a door leading from that that area with the kitchen and dining area to the outside?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And again, I can't quite tell from the, from the plans, that doorway that goes out to the outside, does it go to some steps down to the ground, or what exactly does the doorway exit onto?
Yes, they, it would step down to a walkway on the ground that leads to the front of the garage. And then there is also a a slider or a door to the deck on the opposite end.
Okay. And the, so that the only passageway between the two units is going to be what's on the, the second floor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And and there is not, there are not going to be any outside stairways going from one level to another. Is that correct? They're all an interior stairway?
Correct. It's interior stairway only, with the exception of the, the four steps on the side of the house, but that's
Right. Correct. Okay. And Mr. Zakos, have you talked to any of the neighbors about, about your proposal and received any feedback?
We have not formally discussed, no.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure they've received the abutter's notices, but we have not discussed.
Okay. On the plans that, that were submitted, there's a a plan of land that shows an existing garage well off to the, looks like the side of the the side of your property. Is that presently used as a garage?
It's currently used as storage, not as a garage. It's sort of well off. That is maybe some of the longer history I alluded to before.
That's okay, we don't need to go into that. I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure, because when, when I drove by the property to look at it, it didn't look like, frankly, it was being used as a used as a garage, but I just wanted to confirm that. The two-car garage that's proposed in the accessory unit. Whose cars are proposed to be parked in there?
I mean, there are currently three cars on the property, one for myself, one for my wife, and one for my parents, and you know, it could be any of the three.
So two of those three will be in there? Okay.
Yeah.
Going on to 7.6.7, area limitation. And I think this is what Nathan was was looking into with his question. Says that such accessory unit shall be limited to a maximum of 25% in floor area of the principal residence, or 800 square feet, whichever is greater, exclusive of any garage, shed, or similar structure, or other accessory use attached to the dwelling. I know on the the drawing, A1 of 12, it references that the existing living area is 4,109 square feet. And the proposed living area would be 5,143 square feet, which I assume would be the adding the square feet of the proposed accessory dwelling unit. And I believe the designer indicated it would be 1,034 square feet. How did you, how did you calculate the existing living area?
It was the first floor, second floor, and third floor areas of the house.
The reason I ask is that the residential property record card maintained by the town has a listing for total finished area of 3,872 I'm assuming square feet. It doesn't list any unfinished area. So I was just wondering how we got to the, how we got to the fire higher figure, but you just took the measurements of the, of the existing rooms in the, in the property?
Yes, sir, yeah, the, I think the, the, the assessor's database doesn't have the third floor area. That's, that's missing. I, I believe that's the case. When I looked at the breakdown, it just showed for, I believe it was first and second floors, and so that's the portion that was missing.
Okay. Was the third floor something that was added later?
I don't know when, if I film, I have to answer that, but I
It was, it was finished when, I mean, it's a, I think it's shown on the plans on A4. It's one bedroom and bathroom. And it was existing when we bought the house in 20, at the end of 2013.
Oh, very good. This is the 1,034 square feet doesn't include the the space for the garage. I'm correct in stating that, am I?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Does not include, no.
Right. And Emma, your help on this, typically square footage contained in a garage would not be, not be considered. Is that right?
I believe so, because it's, it wouldn't be considered habitable area, but I can confirm that.
No, okay, I mean, I think you're right, because we've, we've had this before, but
Yeah.
I was just hoping to not be out on the somewhat uncertain on that. The next, the next thing, and this is this is somewhat problematic with the 1,034 square feet equals of the original 4,109 square feet. Section 7.6.7 says that the accessory unit shall be limited to a maximum of 25%. So that technically, it's slightly more than 25%. Although, if you round down, it would be considered 25%. And I don't know what our policy is on this, because we've never had one that's been this close to the 25%, but just slightly, slightly over. I, for one, am not terribly troubled by that, but I think we need to we need to know. I'm assuming it's okay. Brian, Nathan, your thoughts on that?
Is, is the mudroom and such included in this calculation?
No, the, actually, the mudroom is not included in the 134, 10, 1034 square footage.
So the 1034 is just that eating area behind the garage and then upstairs above the garage?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd like to get some, I don't know if Emma can weigh in on this, or if this is something we need town council to weigh in on, but I'd like to get some more clarity on what's considered habitable area, whether or not that mudroom should be included, and what the actual square footage of the original house is, given the discrepancy between what we've got at this meeting today and what's on the property card.
I think that would be, that would certainly be, be in order. I'm troubled, I guess, that the mudroom, but I'm not sure whether the mudroom needs to be included or not, and that, I guess, would get into habitable habitable area. And it strikes me that that is something that we may need to ask for town council's guidance on. Unless there's a definition in our zoning act, and let me just look in our definitions to see if it's no, nothing, nothing referenced. I think that is, certainly that's in order. And I also think we need to get the the okay from the Board of Health on the, on the septic system. Because clearly, 7.6.4 requires that there be a determination made that it's adequate in accordance with the requirements of the Board of Health. And we don't have that as yet.
John, if we didn't have that from the Board of Health, couldn't we put that in our stipulations that, you know?
We could certainly, if, if we were, if we were to go forward with, with it tonight and to approve it tonight, that would certainly be a condition that would be attached to it. So it's not it's not something that we couldn't proceed with tonight. But I'm, I'm just concerned about the, the calculations of the square footage. And what's included, what's not included.
John, what was the eight-point-something reference in the zoning bylaws that we?
Eight point?
Didn't you reference eight-point-something in the?
800 square feet. Yeah, it was 800 square feet or 25%, whichever is is larger. I recall we had an accessory. Okay, I didn't think so.
In, in the legal notice, it does reference, I think, 9.3, which is the special permit, permits.
Thank you, that's where I was looking.
Sue or Chuck, do you have thoughts on this?
Mr. Chairman, I was just wanting to ask a question about handicap accessibility, or any structures that would have to be provided for this construction in terms of as opposed to stairs, maybe ramp, or there, there was a medical condition that was cited?
Access to the building, to the dwelling, excuse me, to the unit would as drawn, would we require a ramp on the side entrance? Or not required, but can be
Accommodated?
Accommodated, yes, sir. With a ramp on the side. Let me see here. Yeah, that would probably be the ideal spot for a ramp. And then, as far as access to the upper floor, chairlift. Stair, chairlift.
Thank you.
Chuck, any questions?
I did have a question, but it wasn't to do with 25%, but it was to do, can we discuss the letter from that was received as part of this package from? Let's see, it was from the building commissioner?
Sure.
Maybe I misinterpreted that regulation. Is this building going to be attached to the single family?
It is, yes.
Oh, okay. Then withdraw that question.
Let's, let's go back to the, the, the subject of the mudroom, because I'm looking at the plans again. And it doesn't look like there's any access for the accessory dwelling unit to the mudroom. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So that the mudroom is actually an extension of the single-family house that is there. So connecting the garage to the single-family house.
Right, correction, correct, that is the purpose of
Okay. So we've got a somewhat unusual situation in that in, in past accessory dwelling applications that, that we have dealt with. The additional construction has been limited to the accessory dwelling unit and didn't include any additional construction related to the existing house. But here, we've got a situation where what's being proposed is some additional construction, including a garage, which is really not part of the accessory dwelling unit. And a mudroom, which is not part of the accessory dwelling unit. And then there's an accessory dwelling unit that's attached to the garage, but not really part of the garage. So that, my thought is now, that as I think about this more, I, I don't think we need the opinion of town council about whether a mudroom is or is not part of the living area, because it's not it's not part of the accessory dwelling unit. Does, does that make sense?
It does to me.
Nathan?
It does to me, although it kind of begs the question of what exactly are we voting on here? Is this the accessory dwelling unit, where is the how is the garage working into what we're supposed to be looking at here? Is that?
Well, under this, under our zoning laws, in order for there to be an accessory dwelling unit, we have to grant a special permit so that they couldn't turn this into a into a two-family, a two-family house. Because that's prohibited by the, by the bylaws. What do I, how do I want to say it? The in order to have it as a, as a separate living unit with a kitchen and a bathroom, it needs to be an accessory dwelling unit. That's how it has to be considered. And it's something I believe our zoning bylaws provide that it can be Yeah, I'm not finding what I, what I thought I was going to find. I don't want to hold it up.
Can I, can I duck in? I'm looking at 762, talking about accessory dwelling units by, by attachment via common wall or containment within an existing single-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's what I just saw. That's what I was looking for.
I'm not sure that there's a common wall here, and it's certainly not contained within the, the existing single-family dwelling.
Those are two different requirements, though.
Yeah.
It need, that has to be a common wall attached to a common wall, which that hallway going across to the new stuff is attached to a common wall? Or it has to be?
But, but we just established that the hallway isn't part of the accessory dwelling unit.
No, but it's attached to a common wall, so the addition is attached to a common wall.
Right, which gets me back to my earlier point that I'm not, there seems to be two projects here, right? There's a garage and mudroom as one project, at least in my mind, and then the accessory dwelling unit that complements the garage, and I'm just not sure.
Well, I think if these folks went to get a permit to build an addition that didn't have a auxiliary dwelling in it, they would have no problem. Their setbacks are there, and all this stuff is, is, is cool. What they're asking the zoning board of appeals to do is accommodate their request to have an additional family members live with them, so there's another kitchen, bathroom, and all that stuff. And the requirements are that a common wall, that people can supervise the people that are living with them via a common wall, meaning they don't have to go outside and run around stairs and go up to the other thing. You can imagine how hokey that would be in some respects, people putting
Yeah.
Family members, yeah, so they're trying to get it contiguous, and if you look at this plan, I mean, the house looks beautiful. I mean, it's all, you know, it just looks when this is built, it's going to look like that's the way they originally planned to build it from day one. Nice job on that, Mr. Architect. So I, I think what we're being asked to do is you know, the biggest hiccup is this 0.1642% on the 25%. They're, they're over by that little whisker. I would be willing, you know, personally, to overlook that type of an overage. It's not even 26%. It's just over slightly.
I did the math, I think it's seven feet that we're over.
Yeah, I think, I think we could agree to round down to 25% as opposed to require, I mean, we've never dealt with it as being, you know, 16.4% or, you know, 21.6%. It's always just been a, a two-figure percentage, and certainly we could do that on this. I, I'm not troubled by I'm not troubled by that at all. Sir, could you describe again the, the common, the common connection on the second floor? What, what exactly that is, that is like? Or perhaps on the on the plans with the A1 of 12, which, which one I would find it on?
The, the common connection is actually page A6 of 12. It has, it shows the second floor plan. And it's, it's a passage that's open as part of an existing space on the second floor that leads out to the, to the common common hallway on the second floor. You see the stairs there that come, that's actually the front entrance of the house on that end of the, of the house. So that passage area there was, or is planned to be a sitting gathering area, but
Yeah, sorry if I may, Ivan, that the room that is currently there is sort of an office slash playroom. And the, you know, kind of expansion to connect with the addition would be treated part of that room. So, you know, it's just a bigger office slash playroom.
So that passageway is already there?
There's a room existing
Thing there, okay.
At the edge of the house, and it will be expanded, you know, with the passageway, which is essentially above the mudroom.
Okay.
There's a door between that existing extended passageway to the living space. So what we're looking at is the living space that they're constructing as this apartment or this auxiliary dwelling within the project. And I think my interpretation of it is that that's what we're here to decide if that's okay or not. And granted, with the mudroom and the other parts of the addition, they're well over what they should be, but the people, we're not looking to talk about that. We're just looking at the living area that the parents occupy. And I think if we put all our standard constraints on there, you know, that are listed here, and include one about the Board of Health, making sure that the sewage is expanded appropriately will be fine.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that, Brian. You know, I think the design is, you know, is appropriate. I think it's a nice design, actually, to get the garage in there and the living area. The neighborhood is is a neighborhood that has large yards. There is a lot of space between dwellings.
And the setbacks are very, you know, setbacks are well within.
There's no, there's no problem with the, with any, with any of the setbacks at all. That's for certain.
Yeah.
You know, with the
No butters here with a problem, right?
Well, let me, let me ask, we haven't, we haven't asked for public comment, so let's, let's suspend the the board discussion, and let me open the matter for public comment. If there is anybody here who wishes to be heard, either pro or con, or has a question about the project, please raise your hand so that you can be recognized. I see one, one hand up. Okay, we will, we will recognize Mark DeSoney.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoney. Why, I have a little road, this is a mess. First of all, I commend what he's trying to do to get the parents in with their health conditions. That, that's a good thing I'm going to say about it. The other thing would be is the measurements is, it is quite close to over, to overdo the foundation of what the original numbers were when they first broke around to put the house there. So I'm looking at it, it's an oversized, it's going to be an oversized lot. And this same, this same discussion we had, this board had, was the old Washington Ave 126 house, when they had their addition. And then they talked over, they wanted to put something down there, and then listened, and then tried to put down a foundation that was still at the start. So this, this is an oversized lot with the in-between extension, but I'm saying it looks like the numbers, I'm not going to jive with what it is, but it's good for the use, but it's still going to be all zoning and consulted and everything to talk on. So I'm looking at the, I'm looking at it as a understanding of numbers and the bylaw and the zoning codes, but it doesn't seem to match up. That's it. Thank you.
Welcome. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard during our public comment session? Going once, going twice? Okay, we will close the public comment session. And back to discussion amongst the board members. If we were to, if we were to approve the project, we have to determine that that we'd have to determine that the single-family characteristics or character of the neighborhood will be maintained, and that the accessory unit remains subordinate to the principal living quarters.
In my opinion, those conditions are met.
Mm-hmm. Nathan, your thoughts on that?
I agree.
As do I.
To me, the only thing holding this up is the Board of Health determination. It seems like they're on top of that. I'm going to make arrangements to expand the Yeah.
Well, let's, let's move then to section 9.3, which is the criteria for special permits and the six specific areas that we have to make findings of. And item number one is community needs served by the proposal. And in previous accessory dwelling unit cases, we have often found that the community need is met by allowing family members to, to live together and making it easier for older Ashland residents to live in a, live in a home in a family environment. And I would assume this probably meets that requirement. Second item we have to cover is traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading.
Yeah, this is no problem.
There's no problem. Three cars parked there already, and there's a garage. Now, what, two cars will be in a garage instead of, I would in a circular driveway. Three is adequately, if you, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The question would be on the, on the sewage septic system, but certainly water and electricity would be met. Neighborhood character and social structures. Again, it's an area where large lots, houses are fairly big, all setback from the street, and this would not seem to change that neighborhood characteristic. Five, impacts on the natural environment. Again, would not seem to have any impact other than what a septic system installation might, might require. And number six would be potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. And again, as we have usually found, when we have decided to grant such a special permit, there's little or no impact on town services. The tax base would be increased because the property would be assessed at a higher level. And as far as employment is concerned, there would be temporary employment by construction workers. How does that sound, Nathan, Brian?
Sounds great.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we ask Emma to direct, to draft a decision in accordance with our discussion and our, and our suggestions this evening, and have it available for us prior to our next meeting, which is scheduled for March 22, at which point we can review the draft decision. And if we find it, find it to be in order, take a formal vote to to grant the special permit. How does that sound?
Yeah, works for me.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, work for me.
Then, what we are going to do is we're going to take a vote to continue the matter to our next meeting, which is on the 22nd, at which point we will review the draft decision. And if everything is in order, we will vote to approve the granting of the special permit. Okay. Any questions that you have, Mr. Zakos, or you, sir?
None, none for me. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
On the same hand, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion then to continue the hearing to Monday, March 22 at 7:00 PM?
I mean, we continue the hearing to Monday, March 22 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second? I think I heard Nathan second that. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
I, Chuck Green, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, agree with the decision.
Okay. Very good. That concludes, that includes the first item on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on to the second item on the agenda, a continued public hearing continued from our previous meeting. Our comprehensive permit at Zero Memorial Drive, as I had indicated prior to, or at the start of the, this meeting, there has been a request or an agreement to continue the matter from this evening to March 22. You may recall that at the conclusion of our February 22 hearing, we had a discussion with the applicant about whether or not in certain peer review studies would be available for our review in time to prepare for tonight's meeting. We received a letter dated March 2, addressed to Dear Mr. Chairman, in furtherance of my letter to you dated February 23, 2021, this letter shall serve as applicant's agreement to continue the matter without testimony for March 8, 2021 to the next scheduled hearing date of March 22, 2021. I'm assuming there is no opposition to this motion, so that the Chair will entertain a motion to continue the comprehensive permit hearing on Zero Memorial Drive to March 22, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
All right, Chuck Green, some more.
Okay, and is there a second? Don't all speak up?
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
I, Chuck Green, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Very good. The matter is continued until March 22 at 7:00 PM. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that is a approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one that we received last week and one that we received earlier today. And let's start with the minutes for the February 9, 2021 meeting. Any proposed changes or questions concerning that? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes dated February 9, 2021?
I move to approve the minutes of February 29, 2021.
Okay. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
I, Chuck Green, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Very good. The next item would be minutes for the February 22, 2021 meeting. Again, those were not distributed until earlier today. Do people have an opportunity to review them and feel able to vote on them tonight, or do we want to continue that until the, our next meeting? What would people like to do? I've had an opportunity to look at them, but I want to make sure everybody has, because it was the first meeting of the comprehensive permit hearing, and the minutes are three pages long.
I didn't get to look at them. I preferred if we could continue that.
That would be fine. I only had one, one change, and that was to include the name of our town council as being present at the meeting. I think she would like to be recognized that she was actually here earning her money. As she most certainly did. Okay, then why don't we continue the consideration of the February 22 meeting minutes until next our next meeting? I don't think we need a motion to do that. We would just take it up at the, the meeting next time. I believe that is all that there was on our agenda. Emma, are there any other items that are to be brought to our attention tonight, or are we, have we done all that we're supposed to do?
I have no staff updates or administrative matters for this meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Nathan Band, vote in favor.
I, Chuck Green, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
I think I lost control of the meeting. Very good.
Just reading your mind, John, just reading your mind.
You did a good job, Brian. Thank you. Absolutely. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.